I'm here from Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Rock.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember Stalin.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Protem, you have a quorum.
Aye, I'd like to invite all those to join the bunch of the way.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, Kelly's excuse. Next, we'd like to approve of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We'll move on next to the consent agenda. So we'll next consider a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is on pages three to fifteen of your packet. Is there a motion?
I think so.
What was that?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Okay, and all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda, most of the consent agenda has passed. Next, we'll move on to consideration of the dispersment reports, reports on page sixteen to thirty-five of your packet for July first of fifteen, two thousand eighteen, and the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-six cents, as well as July sixteenth to thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, for six hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the dispersment reports.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope, I didn't make a note here. Nope. Nope, no, no, I'm good.
Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor of approving the dispersment reports? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Next, we move on to the acceptance of the department reports, which includes the permits, code enforcement, police actions, recreation department report, and those are on pages thirty-six to fifty-two of the packet. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor Protem, if we might, I have Chief Scott McKee here, and I asked him to come and make a brief statement as well in regards to the police report.
Okay.
Any reports regarding the?
Well, Officer Ember, yes.
Yes, good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
I just wanted to let everybody know, or at least remind everyone, we do have a benefit for Officer David Ember. He was with the department for approximately a year. March time, he was diagnosed with brain cancer. So we are holding a benefit this Sunday at Brady's Tavern from noon to four. So we would ask everybody to come out and please support him. Thank you.
Amen.
If we can't support, can we have a place where we can have funds dropped off?
Yeah, so the department does, we are taking donations.
Okay.
And they're going directly to Mr. Ember.
Oh, good.
As long as he feels okay, he's actually gonna come into the police department tomorrow.
Okay.
Kind of check in and see how he's doing.
Okay.
We're fortunate enough that some of our officers are driving around to his doctor's appointments.
That's good, that's good.
Wonderful.
That's good, thank you, appreciate it.
Anything else?
What was it?
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the department reports, say aye.
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 Opposed? Department reports are approved. At this point, we will open it up to items not on the agenda for public comment. And seeing as there are none of the public here, we'll go ahead and close that. Public hearings, no, okay, so that will move us on to action requests. The first action request we have tonight is for the independent contractor agreement with Clifton Grant, and I will let the, which is on pages fifty-three to fifty-five of your packet. And I will let the city administrator introduce that.
Thank you. In your packet, you have information in regards to the proposal for the addendum to the independent contractor agreement for building and land and janitorial services. For the individual that we primarily use is Clifton Grant. And we had discussed in the, in the study session previously, some of the things that you had agreed to already, and as spelled out in what is called Exhibit B, is the compensation schedule. I did add in additional, I'll call it a heavier cleaning of the community room once a month, as well as a recognition that when he's working for events for over six hours, it should be compensated more than a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the entire period. And that for special events and projects, that he can get authorization to work for myself, the Parks Direct, Parks and Rec Director, or the DDA Director for those activities. And the contract period is from August twentieth through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, is there a motion to consider the contract?
I make a motion to approve the resolution for the independent contractor agreement for building and janitorial services with Clifton Grant, incorporating the terms outlined in Addendum One.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a quick, just a quick question. Sometimes he has help that comes in and helps, does he pay out of his own pocket?
It is paid through his contract, yes.
So he does pay then?
Right.
For the help that comes? Wow, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, is his services covered when we do a, like Food Truck Fridays, or, or anything happening in the park? Like the sixty-fifth anniversary, is he, is this contract incorporated in that?
Yes, so that would depend on if he were, if it's a Food Truck Friday, if it would be either the DDA or the recreation department that has asked him to help, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it for me, thanks.
Alright, all those in favor of approval of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, the approval of the two thousand and eighteen water main repair, which is on pages fifty-six to sixty of your packet. And again, I will let the city administrator introduce this one.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. What you have before you is the resolution to approve the two thousand and eighteen water main repair project, which is called the East City Border between Lincoln and Margate, and it's an award of contract to Liquor Forest Services for the lining of the water main in that section. At the, it was included in the capital improvement project budget for, I think it was a hundred and sixty thousand approximately. The estimate has come in at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and that also includes approximately twenty thousand for the landscape restoration and work by the city contractors.
Is there a motion to consider the approval?
So moved. Support.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, are we gonna hold this contract open? I think I read something in here where if repairs have to be done later, will the?
I think that was a different contract.
Well, it was a different, okay, okay, so if we do have to make repairs later after we've paid this?
If Scott recommends, our engineer recommends that we leave some dollar amount there, just to keep it open, just in case of future work.
Okay.
I'll wait on his recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this actually, this contractor, he came through a bid with Southfield, correct?
Yes, the city of Southfield had a similar bid, and instead of going through the exact same process, we just piggybacked on that, and they guaranteed the prices based on that.
I just wanted it to, you know, to know that it was piggyback bid.
Thanks for noting that.
Alright.
Alright, anything else? Alright, all those in favor of approving the water main motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Next on the agenda is the renewal of the MML Meadowbrook liability and property pool insurance. Again, I'll defer to the city administrator to introduce.
Thank you. This is the annual renewal through the Michigan Municipal League in Meadowbrook for the liability and property pool insurance for the city. And the policy is from September first of each year. The premium amount last year was for sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. The renewal is seventy-one thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars, approximately a seven point four percent increase, or just under five thousand dollars. Noted in the memo are the primary reasons for the increase. Some of it is that our annual payroll has increased, property valuations have gone up, the number of law enforcement officers and vehicles, the agreed amount relative to the number of vehicles. One vehicle we expect to auction, so that will be adjusted in the policy coverage. Experience factor, loss ratio, we've had some significant lawsuits in the past, so some of those go into their valuation of the policy amount. And just in general, there's been a slight increase in their property and liability rates.
Okay.
Is there a motion to consider the approval of the liability and property pool insurance?
I would offer that motion.
My second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, did we, did we have a benchmark against MML as far as their pricing with other companies? Did we actually look, seek other pricing comparisons?
We didn't this year. There is one other firm that I'm aware of that works with municipalities. The one advantage of staying with them is that you get the dividend payout, which is the six thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars. And that's only if you renew, so you would be forfeiting that if you were to switch to another company, at least for that first year.
Okay, but did everything else, was everything else close or lower, as far as?
We didn't get competitive bids, no.
Oh, you didn't, okay, okay.
But in past years, their quotes have always been very competitive.
Against who, though?
Against any of the other firms that would write. One of the reasons these pools come into existence is it's difficult sometimes to get these kind of coverages written from, in the commercial insurance market.
Yeah, it's a pretty unique, comprehensive insurance policy that cities have, so I don't know how many other firms would offer. You may end up piecemealing together property, liability, vehicular insurance from, you know, various different policy providers.
Yeah, I would have liked to have seen that and just make the comparison, not to say we would switch, but, you know, it's, we're just basically looking at the sheet and assuming that they're competitive. I have no frame of reference.
So, from my past experience, there's a bit of a long lead time before transferring if you, if you are intent on going with a different insurance carrier. So we can do that for next year and identify the other vendor and see if they would want to submit a proposal.
Okay.
And this motion, it probably doesn't matter too much, but it does say September first, two thousand and eighteen through September first, two thousand and eighteen. So it should be two thousand and nineteen, and I guess it, so that gives us time in the summer, or whatever, to get the comparison rates, so, okay.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, no discussion, then all those in favor of approving the renewal of the property and pool insurance? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the discussion of the MERS Health Care Savings Program and Participation Agreement for Jeff Mueller. Again, I will let the city administrator introduce this.
Okay, in a nutshell, the former city administrator qualified for our retiree health care package, and his personal situation has changed in such a way that it made sense to do something different that would be, benefit him as well as us. He has more flexibility if he were in a health savings account. The benefit to the city is that it saves us about six thousand dollars a year relative to the cost of the coverage. So this essentially establishes the health savings program participation with MERS to set up that health savings account relative to his retired, retiree health coverage. And also, there would not be a beneficiary coverage relative to that, so should his personal term come to an end, we don't have an ongoing liability. And the annual amount would be twenty-five hundred dollars in lieu of the payment to the retiree health care.
Okay, is there a motion to consider?
I would move, who is it, you're, to amend this agreement accordingly, as recommended by the city administrator.
I can't hear you.
I'm trying to figure out what I'm, I'm saying.
Flip over.
That's a good reason there.
I think it's, yeah, it's page seventy-seven, seventy-seven to eighty-four. I'm sorry, I didn't give the page numbers at the beginning.
Yeah, it's, I got lost in the translation.
It should be right now, yeah, there it is.
I would move the approval of the MERS Health Care Savings Program Participation Agreement.
Is there a second?
I'm trying to understand it, to be honest with you.
My understanding is that we're gonna, we're going to pay out some larger amount of money than what this calls for, based on what he has legitimately coming to him as a retiree.
Right, if the current, a brief summary, your current retiree plan would basically give you the health insurance coverage plan, and you would have your copays and things of that nature. So, and you have a lot less flexibility to fall within that plan, and that would cost us an estimated eighty-five hundred dollars a year for the retiree health care coverage.
Because we would be covering?
Right.
It for the rest of their lives.
Right.
Okay.
That's his premium.
Okay.
That was part of his contract, so we've already amended, he's already agreed to it, and the contract has already been amended. When we submitted it to MERS, they said, well, you actually have to set up the HSA account. So that's what they sent us these, their forms to set that up. So, his contract called for, as part of his retiree benefit, he had health care for as long as he was alive. And that cost has slowly crept up year after year. As Cheryl indicated, he's, his position has changed, he has an opportunity to have health care provided elsewhere, and so he, all he's asking is he's willing to, or has already agreed to modify his employment agreement, giving up that employee health care, or retiree health care, in exchange for an annual payment of twenty-five hundred dollars into, into his health savings account. So this motion, these, this resolution simply sets up, that's a vehicle to fund that health savings account, is what this we're asking for this evening.
Twenty-five hundred a year, as opposed to eighty-five thousand?
Yes.
Hundred.
Eighty-five hundred, I mean, yeah, okay. Alright.
Sounds, makes sense to me, so.
So do I have a second for the consideration of the motion?
I second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. That's the end of the action requests, so. What's that?
Fire insurance, escrow.
Oh, did I? Oh, yeah, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. Yep, so move on to the last agenda, item under action requests, which is the resolution to approve participation in the State of Michigan's Department of Insurance and Financial Services Fire Insurance withholding program, which is on pages eighty-five through eighty-eight of your packet. Is there a motion to consider the resolution?
You wanna explain it first, or?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got flustered by the, you guys, no, no, let the city administrator introduce the, yeah, my bad, sorry.
The resolution is in your packet on page eighty-two, and most of you were at the, the study session where we had a discussion relative to, this allows the city to have an escrow account set up when properties experience, especially fire damage, any kind of insured damage, so that you have money set aside to ensure that the property is either rehabilitated or demolished, and it's through the state, and it's in working with the insurance company, so that they are obligated to send us the, the escrow payment for these properties, should they be damaged.
What do we have in place for this now, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Okay.
Seriously?
How long has this been around?
Yeah.
As long as I can remember.
I'm.
It's not new.
Well, no, I know it's, I assumed it wasn't new, but I'm kinda wondering why we've never had it before, it's never come up before.
You didn't have me.
I was given you an opportunity to claim full credit.
Well, maybe we should ask Scott, what's the, what was the premise behind not adding this? Honestly, I don't know that it was ever even brought to?
I don't think the question ever came up.
To our attention that this existed. There is, and I think this was already gone over at the study session, but it does, it does put a little bit of responsibility on the city, because the way the program is set up, a portion, the last payment, so to speak, from the insurance company to the resident, instead of going directly to the resident, comes to the city, and then the city now is the final, you know, we'll hand you your check when you, when you finish your repairs. So if you don't finish the repairs within a hundred and twenty days, the city can keep that last payment, so that they can demolish the property, or what, you know, make the necessary repairs. But it does, it does put a little bit of responsibility on the city to go out and make sure that the repairs have been completed. There is a potential under this program, if the resident says, these are complete, and the city says, no, they're not, that they could then go to the circuit court to make a determination. So there is a little bit of, and it's pretty unlikely, but there is a potential where the city could have some legal cost associated with this program, and just, you know, who's right? The building official, or the resident, or the residence contractor. So I don't know if that was a reason why it was never addressed, or if it was simply just never brought up, but, yeah, until, I had not actually even heard of it until Cheryl mentioned it.
And I don't know how widely known it is, but if you've ever experienced a property, especially that's been fire damaged, and they, the owner did not repair it, you understand the need, and the benefit of having this in place.
House in the woods.
That was gonna be the, what is the flip side of that point, yeah, so. That's, that's a real good reason to have it.
At least one property, I think one up on Lincoln, that is nothing but an empty shell, that doesn't.
Although I don't know that there was insurance.
Doesn't know what's gonna happen there, but.
I believe the last I heard, that one in particular is being scheduled for demolition, they were getting the utilities settled.
Okay, good.
So if this was in place for that property in Lincoln?
And if it had been insured.
Then this would be in place to ensure that you get to a certain point where you can pay it out, or don't pay it out.
Exactly.
By a certain amount of time.
By a certain amount of time.
That's the key, yeah, okay.
One-twenty or something, yeah, okay.
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 Well.
Okay, so do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Second, okay, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the resolution? To approve participation in the state's program for fire insurance? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, now we're done with the action requests. So we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Thank you. I would like to take a moment of personal privilege and ask Ken Martin to come forward.
Aww.
As you probably are already aware, Ken has a remarkable opportunity to become the village manager in Bingham Farms, and he has accepted that, so his last day with us will be this Friday. And I just wanted to thank him for his years of service to the city of Latha Village in particular, but especially, I want to note that he's been extremely helpful to me in my transition in this new role and becoming familiar with the operations here. And he's done a yeoman's job in terms of stepping up above and beyond the requirements. So I just wanted to thank you and applaud you, and wish you well on your new endeavor.
Well, thank you, thank you, Cheryl. It's been a pleasure working here for the last three years. It's been a real pleasure working for you for the last several months. And as I said before, I wish you would have been hired a year ago. Anyway, thanks a lot, everybody, it has been a great, a great pleasure. I've learned a lot of stuff from everybody, and gained a lot of experience here. And it was bittersweet that I leave, because I like the city, I like the residents, I like the people I work with, I like the building, there's a lot of potential here, and I, and I, I'm gonna miss working here with all of you folks, so, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
And we'll have an official farewell for him this Friday from twelve to two, and I believe our administrative office will be closed for that timeframe, just to allow everyone to participate and to wish him well, so just so everyone knows. And it's open to the public, so anyone who has had an opportunity to meet or work with Ken, is welcome to attend.
Can we put it on the website? Not really?
We could.
Well, it won't be that many, it won't be that many more, but it would be still good to invite the community.
Okay. And also wanted to let you know that one of his final projects will be getting the newsletter finished, so it'll be out by next week. And we're looking forward to that, and it will also be announcing the sixty-fifth birthday celebration for the C of Latha Village, also known as LV sixty-five, if you're cool.
That's right.
And we're getting tremendous response already, and I want to thank Scott Ba- And we're getting tremendous response already and I want to thank Scott Baker, who has already stepped up to be one of our sponsors in his firm.
Yay, Scott. A new baby will get that money.
And Michigan First Credit Union has stepped up to be our event sponsor.
Nice.
So we're doing well already and we encourage all of our local business partners and community organizations to participate. Some of the events of the day will include having a community showcase so that nonprofit organizations in particular can be present and share their information with residents. We'll have a paint, a police car activity. I talked the chief into letting us paint his new car.
Is this the one we're auctioning?
Oh, no, it's a new one.
Green.
It's the new one.
Green.
And then after the kids get through, hopefully it'll be mostly kids, but whoever gets through painting the police car, it'll be part of the bike rodeo, you know, teach kids in regards to bike safety.
Oh, cool.
There will also be a bike ride with escorts with the dolcens from the Detroit Institute of Arts to showcase some of the arts that are on display outdoors within the community. We'll have music and food trucks and bouncers and climbing wall, petting zoo. And just lots of fun and we're really excited about it and we're getting a lot of positive response, so we hope you'll all be there and sharing that fun and festivities. Let's see, the auditors were here this past week for the whole week. Pam has survived and we're expecting that their presentation will probably be at the October meeting. You all have your laptops now.
Yep.
And if you want to know anything technical, I strongly urge you to contact IT Wright, not me. I can turn it on and that's the limit of my skills.
Question, question about that, do we get bags or something to?
I did not order bags because they're really kind of personal, but I mean, I could order a basic bag if that's what you would like. And I didn't know if you already had any from the others.
Not this big.
Okay.
Not this big, these were bigger than what we had before.
They were.
So we could, I can ask the clerk to order five bags for you.
Something, yeah.
Here's your Amazon basic bag.
There you go.
In between.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and Sacra has started this new app called Waste Wizard and I gave you the link on, in your memo and it's basically www.sacra.org/waste-wizard. But you can type in various types of items and it'll tell you how you are to dispose of them, so it's very nice and handy and user friendly. I see we have another farmer's market this coming week, summer concerts, food truck Fridays, the DIA art is on display through the end of October and the summer stroll was a great event. It was my first time attending, I did not realize the talent that we have sitting here on council with the steel drum and singing.
Thank you. I didn't, okay, let me pay her right now.
But it was, it was a really cool event and I thoroughly enjoyed it and getting to see more residents out and about and enjoying our community, so it was very nice. Let's see, so I think those are most of the highlights, I don't know if you had any questions on anything. We're still accepting sponsor applications for the 65th birthday, so if you want your logo included on the T-shirts, I do need those by Friday. And I would urge each of you, if you have personal contacts, because sometimes just hearing from someone you know helps to get people to step up and you would obviously have better relationships than I do speaking so new to the community.
And you're also still looking for volunteers?
Yes.
To sign up?
Definitely.
Okay.
Thanks, Cheryl. City attorney report?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Boards, commissions and committees, let's start with the DDA. Anything, Ken, with the DDA?
Nothing.
Okay, Simco?
Nothing to report, except they would, I am working on them to come and just, they wanna come and look at Latha Village to see if they could help us with the planning, so that's forthcoming. And we got a tile, isn't that pretty? From Simco, Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, so if you could pass that down, so.
That's heavy.
Very heavy.
Wow.
It is a real lot.
Ian, anything with Southfield Public Schools?
No, actually, while I was gone, I think the new superintendent came, I wasn't here, can someone give me a quick update and how'd it go?
Very well, she's already been reaching out to us, she had a meeting with the chief in regards to facilities and security. I believe I've been invited, no, I've been invited to speak to them tomorrow morning.
Whoa.
So we'll talk about partnerships and open lines of communication again.
Okay.
That's excellent.
That is nice.
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, for sure. Planning, I was gonna say, planning commission didn't have a meeting, so there's nothing there, something to report there. Anybody with any unfinished or new business?
I do. September 15th, the shred truck day. So the shred truck will be here, I believe it's from 2:00 to 6:00, but there'll be more information coming, but September 15th. What else? I can't remember. Didn't write it down.
Is there a women's leadership thing, something like that?
Yeah, but I don't have.
Okay, okay. Avette?
Thank you. Just wanted to thank everyone for coming out to vote on August 6th, it was, I'm sorry, the 7th, it was a phenomenal day. We had a 50% voter turnout.
Wow.
We had over 1,300 people to come through both precincts.
Wow.
And that was pretty phenomenal. And I wanna thank the precinct workers because they stood the test of time. They're the greatest, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM at night. I just wanna thank all of them.
And you didn't run out of ballots.
I did not run out of ballots and I'm gonna mention why. Chief McKee, your department saved us on election day. We were getting close, getting low on ballots, and I asked Sergeant Zane if they could go up to Oakland County Elections Office and pick up ballots and they did.
Good for you.
Thank you.
And I'm very thankful. Thank you very much and thank you to your department.
That's great, yeah.
But that's a cool those for you too as a leader though, because it would have been horrific for Latha Village to be, have been one of those cities that was on the news. So, you know, we watch you walk around, you don't, you don't take this for granted at all, and so we thank you for your leadership, for avoiding us being on the news.
Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you.
Don't wanna be in a bad way, so thank you, thank you all, I appreciate you.
Avette?
I did report the numbers, we had over 509 people to vote absentee. Precinct 1 has 655 people.
Wow.
And precinct 2 has 699 people to come through the line. It was pretty phenomenal, so I wanna thank everybody and thank you for the time.
Wow, impressive.
So I just wanted to also mention that our clerk, Yvette Tally, did a phenomenal job in making certain things move very smoothly. And a lot of that was because she worked very late hours, many, many nights to make certain things were okay. And I just wanted to thank her again for just going above and beyond and we have a very strong team here. And again, I wanna thank the chief for, you know, having his guys step in, and gal, step in to support when the need became apparent, so I'm just very pleased with that. But it also points to how we need to get her some support for the upcoming election because it's probably gonna be another large turnout. And I forgot to mention an important thing, the ladies in leadership luncheon on Friday, September 7. So the co-hosts are myself, Mayor Garrett, as well as council member, who are you? I'm sorry, I have no brain fart. Donna Stahl, I'm sorry.
I'll do that.
I'm sorry, I forgot my parents' name introducing them one time, so it's just one of my things, but I'm sorry, but in any event, we're having this wonderful event for, it's open to anyone, I've had that question, but just to recognize that, you know, Latha Village was started with the concept of one woman and now we have so many women in leadership roles here in Latha Village, so it's something to celebrate and we're very proud of it, so we're, we're having a luncheon that day on September 7th from 11:30 to 1:00 and just to celebrate and give honor to the people who are doing the work in the community.
Oh, I don't know. 7:00 to 1:00.
Yes, 11:30.
Okay, thank you.
And there will be tickets in regards to it, it's being catered, so the tickets are $15.
Put it in here right now.
Listen.
Oh, you've already done.
I'm done.
Okay, no, good, thank you.
I'm good, thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for the summer stroll, Adam Laurie, Jason Hammond, Vernon English, and who else, who else was?
Kim Hodge and the Time Bank.
Time Bank.
The Mantinans, Court Store with the water distribution, Frank.
Brock.
Frank Solinsky. And, let's see.
All the people who volunteered their houses.
Got it.
Got to name them.
Yeah, very successful.
Yeah, and all, yeah, all the house, housing, houses that volunteered to have the music, yeah, for sure.
Nice.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, then, oh wait, no, I have to take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. All those, all those in favor of adjourned the meeting?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks for that.